I would like to call the meeting to order at 6:34 on December 10th. May we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? And a moment of silence for the people that are in distress.
(Inaudible)
So then, next thing we have on the agenda is the Board Organizational Meeting. Record of the election votes.
The official record of votes for the election on November 5th, 2019 is Harvest Thomas had a total of 1,594 votes. Renee and Lovato had a total of 1,887 votes. Adrienne Schimpf had a total of 1,241 votes. Regina Hurtado had a total of 1,618 votes. And Ramona Lewis had a total of 1,844 votes.
And we'd like to go with the Oath of Office right at this time? So if I could have, um... Ramona Lewis come up to the podium? So if you could raise your right hand? And repeat after me.
I, Ramona Lewis...
I, Ramona Lewis...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of school director...
That I will faithfully perform the office of... The duties of the office of school director...
As required by law...
As required by law...
And will support the Constitution of the United States...
And will support the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the State of Colorado...
The Constitution of the State of Colorado...
And the laws made pursuant thereto.
And the laws made pursuant thereto.
Thank you so much. Renee Lovato? Raise your right hand.
I, Renee N. Lovato...
I, Renee N. Lovato...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the office...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the office...
Of school director...
Of school director...
As required by law...
As required by law...
And will support the Constitution of the United States...
And will support the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the State of Colorado...
The Constitution of the State of Colorado...
And the laws made pursuant thereto.
And the laws made pursuant thereto.
Regina? Raise your right hand.
I, Regina Hurtado...
I, Regina Hurtado...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the office...
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office...
Of school director...
Of school director...
As required by law...
As required by law...
And will support the Constitution of the United States...
And will support the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the State of Colorado...
The Constitution of the State of Colorado...
And the laws made pursuant thereto.
And the laws made pursuant thereto.
Labor in the agenda, um... And you can do that, you can take that up. Thank you. Monica, can we have roll call? Mrs. Hurtado?
Aye, are here. I don't know which one it is.
Mrs. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Lovato?
Here.
And Mrs. Quintana?
Here.
Right now, um, we'd like to open it up for the officers. We will start nominating officers for the board. But first, I would like to let everybody know that I have enjoyed running as the president, but I am ready to give it over to someone else, the younger set. So their minds are more sharper, you know, for everything, right on it. So I just want to say that it was really a great job doing this. The greatest reward we have, because we're not paid for this. You know, we do it out of the kindness of our hearts and for the goodness of the children. So I just want to say whoever gets the positions, I'm okay, you're okay, we're all okay. Okay? So, I would like to open the nomination of the president. I'm, this is me. I would like to nominate Ramona Lewis as president for the next school year.
I second.
Any discussion? No? Ramona, would you like that position? Would you accept it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And then next, we are going to go to...
Do we need a roll call?
Yeah, we do need a vote. So let's go ahead and vote. Can I have a...
Mrs. Quintana, you need to ensure that there aren't any other nominations.
Oh, are there any other? Renee, Regina? No? There in CNN roll call.
Mrs. Hurtado?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Lovato?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
And then we're going to go on to the Vice President. Okay, it's yours.
Okay.
So turn on, make sure your mics on.
So nominations are now in order for the office of Vice President. Do we have any nominations for Vice President?
I would like to nominate Renee Lovato as Vice President.
Are there any other nominations? Do I have a second? I'll second it. She could second it, too.
Oh, I can second it myself.
Okay, so seeing no more nominations, the office of the Vice President is closed, and the nominee for the Vice President is Renee Lovato. We will now hold the election for the office of Vice President by roll call.
Mrs. Hurtado?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Lovato?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
So nominations are now in order for the office of Secretary. Do I have a nomination for Secretary?
I nominate Regina Hurtado for Secretary.
I second that. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, nominations for the office of Secretary are now closed. The nominee for the office of Secretary is Regina Hurtado. We will now hold the election for the office of Secretary by roll call.
Mrs. Hurtado?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Lovato?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
And now we have the Treasurer. Nominations are now in order for the office of Treasurer. And I nominate Connie Quintana for the office of Treasurer. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
And do you accept that?
Sure.
Seeing no more nominations, the nominations for the office of Treasurer are now closed. The nominee for office of Treasurer is Connie Quintana. We will now hold the election for the office of Treasurer by roll call.
Mrs. Hurtado?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Lovato?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
So now we're going to move seats accordingly. So...
I don't know where my seat is.
Dawn Rangel, Director, Secretary? You're here.
Let me take my weapon.
And you're here.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody comfortable?
Ready.
Now I need a motion to accept Monica Avina as Assistant Secretary and Shay Martinez as Assistant Treasurer to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Monica, would you please call roll call?
Mrs. Hurtado?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Lovato?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
So now, please sign the confidentiality affidavits and return to Monica.
I'll text him.
Cameron, can you come take a picture?
You gonna take a picture? You should hear me. Oh.
Thank you, Cameron.
Or both. Both, I would say. Where they are and then have them come down. Do that one first.
Thank you.
So we will now go through the list of schools and committees to assign board representation. Does anybody have any particular committee they would like to be on?
I would like to continue representing DAC.
Oh, you guys got, got to turn on our mics.
I would like City Council, if nobody else would like.
I could take Community Health.
Oh, we skipped. I would like Adams 14 Education Foundation as well.
I can do Legislative.
I'll take the Rotary.
Ms. Quintana, do you want any of the committees?
I'll do it first.
Okay. Do we want to go on to schools or you want to finish this first? Yeah, I'm not sure what Area Boards is. I would need more information.
Area Boards is heads of different boards that are present in the Adams City community. It's a meeting I attend as well. It's a good group to be able to meet with folks that are serving other parts of the public sector.
I'll take that one if somebody else wants that one, okay?
That one is at 11:30. It's a lunch meeting.
It is a lunch meeting.
Just so that you are aware.
And it's the third Tuesday, okay.
Every third month.
I can take the Commerce City Urban Renewal Authority.
And typically, that one kind of goes hand in hand with the Aurora Urban Renewal Authority.
Okay, so I'll, I'll take that one, too.
And one of the things I would suggest is, is that as the next director is seated...
Yes.
There might be some redistribution.
Great, thank you. Okay, school assignments. Stars. I can take that, it's right on my block.
I would love my high school as if nobody wants the high schools.
Sure.
Both, Lester Arnold and Adams, yeah. I will, of course, take All Sup and Roseville. And I will also take Kearney. I would love Adams Middle. And Kemp is in my neighborhood. I'll keep, I'll keep Kemp.
So since I have the one preschool, I can take Sandville as well. And then Central.
I feel like we're taking them all, Connie, do you want some?
Aw. Jump in, anytime.
So we have Dupont, Hanson, Kemp?
No, Renee's...
No.
I took Kemp.
Okay. And Monaco. I'll take Hanson. And Monaco.
I'll take Dupont. I like Dupont. I like all our schools, but...
Okay.
All right.
Regina?
Regina, yeah.
Are we done?
Regina. What about Stars? Ramona?
At this time, the one piece of official business with our new board tonight is that by law, we need to certify the mill by December 15th. And prior to doing that, I'm going to have Mrs. Shay Martinez, our Chief Financial Officer, come up and give you a brief overview of the importance of certifying a mill.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, and Superintendent Rangel. It's my pleasure to present to you your first official decision item. I just want to give you a very brief background of the mill levy certification and what it means. Each school district in Colorado is required to impose property tax levy to finance the local share of total program. Beginning in 2007, 2008, legislation was passed to stabilize school district mill levies. The legislation capped mill levies at 27 mills. So if a district was 27 mills or less, it was frozen at where it was at the time. This does not apply to districts that have had a successful Tabor election. Residential property currently has an assessed valuation rate equal to 7.2% of its actual value. So what that means is, one mill of tax is the same as 1/10 of 1%. Therefore, a residential property with an actual value of $100,000, which is kind of funny in Colorado, would have an assessed valuation of $7,200. And the mill levy, each mill would raise $7.20 annually. The 2020 assessed value for the district is $871,148,030. This is an increase of $137,524,80 over last year. Of this amount, we can only levy against $865,171,230 because the district has a TIF, which is an abbreviation for Tax Incremental Financing. If there's any sort of deal that the county's made with entities to not tax them for a certain amount of time, we're reduced by that amount, usually for a period of time, such as 10 or 15 years. And when that time is up, then we can mill against that valuation. Colorado Department of Education determines all of the mill levies, with the exception of the bond mill levy, which is provided by an election and local taxpayers. The bond mill levy is set based on the projected principal and interest payments and any fees that are anticipated for the year. So in, in the actual resolution, it gives these amounts. I'll just briefly go over that CDE set our general operating expenses at 24.688 mills, which will raise $21,359,347. Our general obligation bond payments are anticipated at $6,580,482. So our mill for that is 7.606. Our voter-approved mill levy override is a set amount of $4,890,000, to which we will levy 5.652. And then the county provides us what the anticipated abatement is, which is usually a pretty small amount. And that is $54,962. And the mill on that is .0632. For a total district mill levy of $38.009, or $26,962... Sorry, $962,481. I would be happy to answer any questions after a motion.
Any questions?
I need a motion to approve Business Item 1.1, to approve Resolution 19-013, the certification of amounts to be raised from tax levies for 2020.
So moved. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Monica, roll call, please.
Mrs. Hurtado?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Lovato?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we have communications. And I invite you to speak if you'd like to. Renee?
I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight and all of your support throughout the whole process. Excited to get to work. Thank you. I know.
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
I know. This one comes all prepared.
I would just like to thank everyone, um, for the support, not only through this election, but through all the years. Um, while we can't change the past, we can write our own story for the future. So I'm ready to change the chapter and start beginning a new Adams 14. Oh, yes, sorry. Sorry, I forgot about this. Um, also, there's a fundraising event for the Mariachi Program. Um, they, uh, do a lot of great work, not only through the community, but also at Kearney Middle School. So if you are able to attend December 14th at the Versatile Hall on, um, Highway 2, it's going to be, um, Santa, karaoke, games, crafts, prizes, raffles, food, snacks, and merchandise. So if you have no plans, come support our kiddos.
Is that the place that you two ladies?
Charps.
Charps, yeah.
I just want to say welcome to the three new board members. Uh, I'm looking forward to this, and I think we'll have a wonderful next two years. Well, for me. So welcome on board. Um, I'm looking forward to working with you all.
Thank you. Um, so I just want to thank everyone who helped in this campaign by donating money, um, sharing posts on social media, putting signs in yards, making calls, and talking to friends and neighbors. It took everyone to win this election for all of us, and I sincerely appreciate you all. Um, I also want to thank the incredibly supportive board members from Denver Public Schools. I have two of them here tonight. Lisa, three? Angela Colbyon, Lisa Flores, and Happy Haines. Um, thank you so much for being here. They've been, um, so supportive, um, in my, my journey here. Um, I can only hope that I can do a great job for our community as they have done for Denver. And then, um, together, we can build a functional school district that creates opportunities for our students to thrive. I'm ready and excited to represent our students, um, teachers, and community. In order to catapult our district forward, we must set aside our differences and stand together to honor the diversity of our community and equip our students to succeed. Our families know what's best for their kids, and we need to listen to them to build a school district that everyone can be proud of. And, um, thank you so much for this exciting opportunity. Lastly, I want to thank my family that's here, um, for their support and love and encouragement. Thank you. Um, any other discussion? Yeah. So, um, now there's a need for an executive session this evening under CRS 2464024B, legal advice. Um, the board will conference with an attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific matters and a board vacancy. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Monica?
Mrs. Hurtado.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Lovato.
Aye.
Ms. Quintana.
Aye.
So at this time, we'll adjourn the meeting. Do we need a motion to adjourn? No?
No, madam chair.
Okay, okay, great. Super. Okay, we will adjourn to executive session. So we're back from executive session. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
Monica, roll call, please.
Mrs. Hurtado.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Lovato.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana.
Aye.
So we're adjourned at 8:07.